Good morning and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Cablecast Post Agenda on Independent Venues for November 7th, 2025. I am Councilperson Bob Sharland, and for the record, we are joined by Councilman Kahari Mosley and Councilwoman Bar Warwick online. Today, I wanted to have a post-agenda here to discuss the state of independent venues in Pittsburgh, what I believe to be a really important cultural institution, as well as, you know, an avenue for employment, and really something that makes Pittsburgh unique here. I want to thank the venue owners and folks affiliated with the venues for bringing this kind of to my attention. This hopefully is the start of a conversation that we can have about what we can do to make sure that these institutions are lasting and continuing to grow in our city here. So, we are joined, I'll let you guys introduce yourselves if we can go through.
Hello, Adam Valen, I'm the Director of Marketing at Jusky Entertainment and the Board Vice President of the PEA Chapter of the National Independent Venue Association.
I'm Chris Copan, I own Bottle Rocket Social Hall.
I'm Pierce Murato, I'm with the original Pittsburgh Winery.
I'm Brandon Lehman, I own Little Giant Studio.
Maddie Lafferty, one of the owners of Club Cafe.
Adam Glunovich, I'm one of the owners of Haven.
Allison Hardin, the Office of Nighttime Economy with the City of Pittsburgh.
Thank you guys all for being here today. I believe we've got a presentation to walk through and then we will have a little bit of time to talk back and forth after that. All right, we up?
Yep.
We're up, all right.
Good morning, members and staff of City Council. As I said before, my name is Adam Valen, I'm the Marketing Director for a Pittsburgh-based concert promoter, an event producer at Jusky Entertainment in Pittsburgh. We produce over 750 events annually in the greater Pittsburgh region, ranging anywhere from 200-cap clubs to a two-day music festival called Four to Chord Music Festival. Additionally, my role, I am also serving as the Board Vice President for the Pennsylvania Chapter of NIVA. For those who don't know, NIVA is the National Independent Venue Association, which represents independent mom-and-pop-owned music venues, comedy clubs, promoters, and festivals of all shapes and sizes across the United States. To give a little background on NIVA, NIVA formed in 2020 during the wake of COVID to help galvanize small businesses in the creative economy and the independent venue sector. As we realized when our venues were shuttered, that we were at very much risk of extinction and still are facing issues to date due to the nature of our industry being such a communal spaces and cultural spaces that encouraged large gatherings. I want to first take an opportunity to thank you, Councilman Sharland, for calling attention to this topic. I think it has a certain necessity to it. And I also want to thank folks in the room for their participation today. I also want to be mindful of the fact that those that are represented here today do not fully make up the entire ecosystem of independent venues. There are still many independent venues that exist in all councilperson's districts. These are critical infrastructure and businesses that are community spaces for gathering, for live events, for so much more than just, you know, the physical space. So, I want to dive into, you know, I want to dive into what we're going to be talking about today, which, giving a little bit of overview of independent venues in the city of Pittsburgh, diving into some of the state-of-live data that has been uncovered through the National Independent Venue Association, what are some of the industry challenges that we're facing to date, and also kind of zooming out and looking at, you know, where do independent venues fit within the live entertainment ecosystem? And going into recommendations as well as, we have venues here that have very unique and interesting stories of how they contribute, how they continue to produce events, procure artists, and develop artists as well, and allow time for Q&amp;A. So, I want to start with the first existential question. Why do independent venues matter in their community? Entertainment and independent venues have made up the fabric of Pittsburgh's entertainment communities for decades. When you look through the history of independent venues in the city of Pittsburgh, you have historic theaters like the Stanley Theater in Syria Mosque, through the decades going up through punk rock clubs like The Electric Banana, The Decade, Metropole, Club Laga, et cetera, even down to more recently venues that have unfortunately closed their doors have been those that are, such as Alter Bar in the Strip District, the Rex Theater in South Side, Shadow Lounge in East Liberty. The names go on and on, and all of these spaces have been such, again, cultural institutions in their own respective neighborhoods. I want to talk about, you know, why do they matter? I think the first thing that we think about is when we're talking about independent venues, we're talking about these are spaces that are the launchpads for artists. In my formative years, starting to get my footing in the live event industry, one of the venues that I frequented a lot was Alter Bar. I had worked at the box office stuffing envelopes for what we'll call tickets and greeting people in the doors and really getting to see this vibrancy and culture of artists that would come through our doors. I remember one night, I think it was back in 2012, we had a sold-out show featuring the indie pop band Group Love. And the first band that showed up, I think as we're having people come through the door, there's maybe about 100, 200 people in the room, and I see two guys walk onstage. It's a drummer and a keyboardist, and they absolutely tore the house down. I think I knew in that moment that I was like, this is a band that, or an artist that's going to go places. That band's Twenty One Pilots, and they had spent three years grinding through independent venues before, now most recently completing a huge run of amphitheater shows over the summer. They're one of the biggest artists of the 21st century. When we talk about why do independent venues matter, that's why they matter, because they are essentially the launchpads for these artists, and they really help create a pipeline for artists to grow and perfect their craft professionally. Another big piece of it, as well as being a launchpad for artists, these spaces have a massive economic effect locally. What we learned in 2020 was that for every dollar spent in an independent club, $12 is generated in economic activity in those neighborhoods. When you're thinking about going to a show, you're not just thinking about going to the venue and coming home, you're going out for dinner before the show, you're filling up your tank with gas. If you're coming in from out of town, you're putting heads in beds at the local hotel. People, you know, another thing is people plan to go to shows to buy outfits at local retailers because they want to plan their night around this one singular event. So, we're seeing that, you know, there is a huge multiplier effect by hosting events at these independent spaces. I think the other thing to also consider too is not only are spaces, you know, just there to host events, we're also huge community partners and builders. These are very intimate spaces where people can gather, they can connect, they can experience culture up close and very intimately, unlike any experience that you can. These aren't big-box Walmart spaces. Every single space here and in town has its own unique story, its own audience, its own feel. All of these spaces can't be replicated, and so I think it's really important to talk about how these spaces in general are just huge for their community, as well as, you know, reutilizing their spaces in multiuses where it's not just producing events, they're using it for community meetups, they're using it for industry meetups, they're using it for a multitude of different reasons outside of just the space that it assumes to produce events. Moving on, I think that, you know, I think we have to ask the question also, why now? Why should we, again, why should we care about Pittsburgh's live independent venue scene? I think one thing to think about, as I mentioned before, again, our independent venues are community anchors and economic drivers through our community. We look at, you know, there's between 30 and 40 independent venues of all shapes and sizes in the city of Pittsburgh, and that includes for-profit music venues, not-for-profit theaters, comedy clubs, jazz clubs, performing arts centers. There's a huge impact in every community that has these spaces in their own communities. Additionally, you know, we're talking about venues as well, also looking at festivals that exist in the city of Pittsburgh. We have at least 10-plus major music festivals that bring in a global audience that includes anything from the Pittsburgh Blues and Roots Music Festival, more regionally Millvale-Northside Music Festival that really helps promote local artists, local staff, and really retains a lot of that local economic retention in those neighborhoods. Additionally, we have ones like Four Chord Music Festival, Three Rivers Arts Festival, Pittsburgh Black Music Festival, Pittsburgh International Jazz Festival, the Pittsburgh Irish Festival, and so on. These events are bringing in hundreds of thousands, if not millions, annually to the city of Pittsburgh. One thing too as well, I think that it's important to note that, you know, these venues are tours and magnets, and we're seeing that now at a global scale in terms of recognition. I think we all saw the report about National Geographic naming Pittsburgh as a global destination. I want to call out that they were citing that we have a thriving arts and entertainment scene. So, again, why are we here to talk about independent venues? Because we matter to these communities, and we are bringing in people because of what we have to offer. Additionally, we have organizations like the International Festival and Events Association that are naming cities like Pittsburgh for what they contribute for a festival as a world festival and event city. So, we're starting to receive this kind of global recognition for Pittsburgh as being a thriving arts community, but we need to look at how we can continue to preserve it and also encourage new businesses, which, again, I'm very excited to see that we've been seeing new businesses in accelerator programs that have been coming to attract this kind of industry growth that really helps, again, put us on the map economically. We have venues like Haven and Bottle Rocket Social Hall that are represented here today that have opened recently within the last couple of years, that, again, they're filling gaps in spaces, like Oakland, for example, that has been vacant of a live entertainment space for years, and so it's really filling that gap of how do we commune in these different communities. Additionally too, I think it's important to note that, you know, as we talk through like the ecosystem at large, as venues are, you know, one piece of the puzzle, there's also these other industry adjacents that are starting to open up. We're starting to see, Pittsburgh has the first vinyl manufacturing plant with Hellbender Vinyl in Lawrenceville. We have Little Giant that is a modular space for bands to be able to rehearse, to be able to commune. Tech 25, which is an incredible workforce development program that feeds directly into our ecosystem. Additionally, we're starting to see more educational opportunities through things like Point Park University, who's now starting to get into the field of event production and engineering, which is ultimately going to tie back into our industry and kind of keeping the cycle and the ecosystem alive. So, moving forward, as we're talking through, you know, the why we matter, I think it's important to understand the what are the issues and what is contributed by this sector. And so I think one thing that's really important to note is that because the live independent sector, by nature, you know, we run independently, there's not really public backing, there's not a larger, until 2020, there had not been a large organization that has been able to really take a deep dive into what this industry can contribute to its economy. And so I think with NIVA, we were able to publish the first of its kind, which is, we're now proud to say, as of June 25 and now September 25, there are state-by-state reports. We have the State Alive, which is the first economic research study that really helps understand the live independent sector. Just a little bit about, you know, about NIVA and its research partner Techonomy, and a little bit about the study. So, just to get a better understanding of the study, it's, again, this study really helps understand the anecdotal and emotional stories of the live independent sector, but also really gets into the meat of what the economic and cultural impact is of these spaces. And these are all, and again, transparently, like, this sector has never had the advocacy arm or the data to really analyze why these spaces matter. So, in 2024, NIVA launched the first comprehensive national study to really analyze the economic contributions and challenges of these venues, performing arts centers, promoters, and festivals. And, again, the goal of this really was to be able to, we all have the qualifying stories and emotional stories of why these spaces, or what we've contributed in these spaces, but we've never had the quantification to be able to really tell the story from a contribution level. There's a little bit of methodology behind it, I'd be more than happy to reference members of council if folks have questions about methodology to members of NIVA staff to discuss that. It's something that I'm not fully diving into, but, you know, really getting into, you know, understanding what, while this is state data, I think it's really important to understand that majority of membership is coming from Philadelphia and Pennsylvania and Pittsburgh. So, really understanding the grasp of what we have here is really important to acknowledge. And so, as we're kind of going through some of these numbers, there are two numbers in particular that I think are really, really important to note. One is 72, and one is 3.6, and I'm going to get to that right now. The 72 is that 72% of independent stages in the year 2024 were unprofitable. I think that when you look at that, I mean, that's looking at almost one in four venues made a profit. And when they did make a profit, it's very minimal. I think we need to get out of the mind space that even if there is a profit to be made, that doesn't mean that, you know, they're driving Ferraris or they're owning a yacht. We're barely scraping by for those that are turning a profit. And now to get to the 3.6. 3.6 is the billions of dollars in economic output that this industry contributes to the state. And again, that's looking at everything from the economic multipliers of lodging, and recreation, and travel, and tourism, et cetera, as well as the adjacence throughout the ecosystem. PEA's independent venues are contributing $2 billion to the state's GDP. Additionally, again, all of our member venues and all of our venues are contributing through tax revenue. We're contributing almost $230 million to local and state taxes. Additionally, within independent venues, we're also bringing in millions of people a year to our spaces. I think it's important to talk through, you know, again, not just the events that we have here, but like, how does this impact on a larger scale? And I think it's important to note that these communities are driving tourism. To look at national statistics, again, we're accounting for 9.2% of the total US travel and tourism revenue. And I want to back up for a second to also talk through the GDP contribution. One thing that we discovered through this report is that the live independent sector is larger than the beer industry, the gaming industry, and the airline industry in terms of what we contribute to a national GDP. So, again, when we're having these conversations, I want to encourage the thought of, you know, what happens when this section or sector of the ecosystem is taken out of that equation? Because, again, pointing back towards the 72% of venues being unprofitable in 2024, while we thought that COVID was really, you know, the cliff here, and we're thankful that folks were able to survive through the pandemic, we're still in a much tougher spot than we were in 2025 than we were in 2020. Looking through some of the tourism dollars that are going throughout the state. Lodging, again, putting heads in beds, it's 233 million. When people are going out to shows, they're going to restaurants and bars afterwards, it's 23.8 million. Retail shopping at almost 12 million. Gasoline and transportation is 6.5 million, other recreation. Again, all of this collectively, we're contributing almost $280 million in state tourism spending. Another key piece of this too is employment. Independent venues are run by people that know their community, that live within their community, and they also hire within their community. I think it's really important to note that, again, some venues may, every venue will look different in terms of how it's made up, but what we know is that independent venues care and hire locally. The sound engineer that is running sound, the person that's getting your drink, the person that's taking your ticket, these are all local people that are all spending money locally, and they're all staying within their own communities economically. So, I think it's important to note that throughout direct job-supported, PEA's supporting at least almost 11.5 thousand jobs in the state through also tangential employment, again, that's gig workers, it's folks that are industry adjacent that are coming in to work these spaces, touring staff. We're supporting almost 25,000 jobs there. And I think also, again, just to look at a snapshot of the industry as a whole, looking at what we see on average with some of our members and how they're being activated. We're seeing at least 41% of our members are programming at least shows at least four nights a week, if not more. Almost all of our stages are selling a ticket or have some sort of cover charge. 91% of us are operating year-round. And I mentioned that, you know, as a promoter, you know, filling some of these rooms, we're doing 750 shows a year, but other venues are staying active year-round with almost half of the year being programmed, if not more. And just to look at, you know, what we've learned from some of the State Alive data is just also some of the fear through talking of what to be expected from 2025, from 2024, and what we're seeing, and I'd like to pass it off to my colleague Chris about, you know, really talking through what are the challenges that we're seeing as a sector? And where, and really, how does this, like, how does this sector work? And what are some of the challenges that we're dealing with?
Yeah, thank you, Adam. Yeah, so I think Adam did a great job, you know, looking at the big picture, the impact of all of this. I'm going to step in now and talk a little bit about the challenges that we're facing kind of day-to-day and why we think this conversation is really important to start having right now, sooner rather than later. So, as Adam mentioned, only 72% of venues lost money in 2024, and that's a number that we expect to go up in 2025. The venues that are succeeding in Pennsylvania are succeeding at a 1% to 5% margin. So, the margin for error has never been thinner, and I'm going to dive a little bit into why that is. So, I guess we'll back up a little bit and just talk about what a modern venue is and what the business model really looks like. So, there's really two sources of income for a venue, there's tickets, and then there's food and beverage sales. There's miscellaneous things at Bottle Rocket, we do things like memberships, there's room rentals that a lot of venues are able to do, but I would say 95% of our revenue comes from tickets or food and beverage. I think across the board, you know, venues I've talked to across the country, the venues represented here on the panel today, we're getting squeezed on both sides of these, which is really starting to affect us and starting to result in closures. I think we've seen a lot of closures in the city already, whether it was Club Cafe, which thankfully reopened, or, you know, even the Hard Rock Cafe. Venues across the country are suffering, and this is why. So, just right there, if you could go back, Adam, for a second. The first thing I want to say is the ticket revenue is probably about 40% of our income at Bottle Rocket. I'll use Bottle Rocket as the example just because it's the numbers I know best. Of that, 40% of our revenue, 75 to 85% of that ticket revenue goes back to the performer as part of the agreements for them to perform. Sometimes it's 110% if they don't sell enough tickets, and we have a guarantee out. So, you know, two sources of revenue, one of which almost immediately leaves our business. Okay, you can move forward now, Adam, thank you. So, on the ticketing side, there's a few challenges that we're really starting to see start to dramatically impact the business. The first is the rising touring costs, you know, it's no lie, or it's obvious to everybody that it's getting more expensive to do anything, and it's getting more expensive to tour. As gas prices go up, hotel prices go up, everything is getting more expensive. This is really starting to affect small-capacity venues like Bottle Rocket as there's more and more pressure on the bands to maximize their revenue on a tour, which is starting to eliminate some of the smaller-capacity rooms across the country. There's a real need to play the largest room possible. Instead of playing to 200 people at Bottle Rocket, maybe you would book a 500-capacity room, even if you can only sell 210 tickets. Those extra 10 tickets can be the difference between a band breaking even on a show and a band losing money on a tour. You know, as a result of that, guarantees are starting to go up, which is starting to increase the risk for our business. Guarantee is basically, most of our deals are structured in a way where there's a guaranteed set of money, say $1,000 versus a percentage of ticket sales, whichever is higher, the band receives. As the guarantee goes up, the risk for that band becomes increased. And, again, I think there's a lot of attention being paid to these small rooms getting left behind as they need to play the largest room possible. They're seeing their streaming revenue go down, they're seeing their album sales revenue go down. So, the tour is really the way that a band can make money, and they have to maximize that revenue. I think compounding that problem, we're seeing a real gutting of music discovery channels across the ecosystem. You know, music magazines, radio, traditional formats where you would discover new music are just being completely gutted, and year to year, it's getting worse. More people are relying on algorithm for their music programming, and these algorithms are programmed to almost exclusively play you things that it knows you already like. It will not take a risk to play you something you haven't heard before because if you don't like it and you click off the app, that's lost revenue, right? So, these are things that are programmed to just reinforce the things we already like, there's no music discovery. As a result of this, and as a result of the increased costs in the touring economy on the fan, we're seeing a lot of fans are starting to no longer look to discover music in a live setting. They're only attending shows for bands that they know several songs of. You know, if you're a brand-new artist and you're trying to break in, it used to be you would play markets because people would come and see you live, and that would be a way to discover you. At this point, we're seeing people will not attend shows for bands that they haven't heard at least three to four songs of. And, you know, that's compounded by, again, the fact that these bands need to play the largest rooms possible. So, at the smaller capacity, we're left with, you know, smaller bands that less people know, which inherently less people will attend the shows of. It's kind of a compounding problem. I think, you know, in Pittsburgh especially, we're starting to see rising rents in neighborhoods. Often, these are neighborhoods that the venues themselves have been the drivers of the revitalization of the neighborhood. Businesses have been built up around the venues and the traffic that we're bringing in. You know, we're proud to be rebuilding these neighborhoods and supporting that, but then we're getting squeezed out of the ensuing success from our business. We're also starting to see increased competitions from conglomerates, including within our own rooms and our own venues. And, you know, I know there's a lot of attention paid to venues that are owned by conglomerates, but I think it's important to point out that in a lot of our rooms, we are competing with them for our own stage. You know, I know there are venues in the city that have agreements with these conglomerates to produce shows in their space because they do want more shows in their space. The venue will submit an offer to a band, the conglomerate can see the offer, beat the offer, and put it in their own room with the conglomerate taking the money off the table for themselves. This is something we're seeing again and again, and again, it's kind of a catch-22 because we're starting to lose show inventory in our venues, and these conglomerates offer us a path to rebuild show inventory or get show inventory back. But now we become reliant on them, and one day, we've seen it happen before, where they can just cut off the feed, and, you know, these venues are left with bare-bones internal staffs, so they're not able to compete within their own room. I think we're also starting to see real increased price sensitivity in customers, which is really starting to affect, again, those smaller bands, the bands that are really scrapping to recover their touring costs. And, you know, something that NIVA as a whole is starting to really investigate or dive into is these predatory resale markets. I know just last night, I was curious, I looked at StubHub for Bottle Rocket tickets. Bottle Rocket has a pretty strict resale policy. There are tickets for tonight's show for $1,500 available on StubHub. It was a show that was $25 to get into initially. You know, and I think, you know, StubHub, you know, these ticket reselling platforms, they're paying a lot in Google Ads search where they appear above the venue's own website in ads or in Google search for tickets. So, it's confusing customers, it's predatory. A lot of these ticket platforms don't even have the tickets that they're offering to sell. We've had so many scam tickets come to Bottle Rocket that they buy off seemingly real websites like StubHub. They're not able to get refunds, and then it becomes our problem to try and fit them into the room when we didn't sell them a ticket, there's no space for them marked, you know, it's nothing. And it's also starting to affect some of our ticket sales where a show will appear sold out. I know this happened just last week at a show that was sold out on Sunday. 200 tickets sold, only 150 people attended because 50 of those tickets were bought by scalpers that then marked them up for crazy prices. It resulted in 50 less people in our room. You know, we average about $15 per person in our room in food and beverage sales. You know, that is crucial to our business to have those 50 people in the room. And it's just, it's ruining a lot of consumer trust. So, that's the ticketing side of things, we're seeing a lot of challenges. And now we'll look at the food and beverage side, if you can click, thank you, Adam. I think the biggest headline that we're seeing across NIVA, across the country, is just the drop in demand for food and beverage sales. From 2023, we've seen an 8% drop in Americans who consume alcohol. It's the lowest percentage in 86 years of tracking. Only 54% of Americans reported that they currently consume alcohol when they go out. At the same time that we're seeing less people than ever, you know, drink, we're also seeing our insurance premium spike in a completely unprecedented way. I know at Bottle Rocket, I can just tell you, you know, my story, we were dropped from our insurance carrier. We never had a claim against us, we never had anything, you know, no red flags. We run a very clean business. We were dropped by our insurance carrier because they no longer wanted to insure the live entertainment industry, had to find a new insurance carrier. Our premium increased, I think, 125% overnight. And that's happening across the country. As we talk to these venues at NIVA and different conferences, this is becoming a really huge issue that's cutting into- This is becoming a really huge issue that's that's cutting into our, uh, you know, again, we're operating at a one to five percent margin. So a fi- a hundred percent increase in insurance premiums, paying forty-two thousand dollars a year or more insurance premiums, it's it's starting to become very, very debilitating. And as the market thins with more and more carriers leaving, the prices of the people that are left are only going up. Um, we're seeing rising inventory costs, I think that's across all businesses. You know, that combined with the price sensitivity in customers is really starting to impact, again, I think, that first number on the percentage of people that will drink on the night out. Um, excuse me. We're also starting to see really sharp increases in our ASCAP, BMI, and CSAC licensing. So for those not familiar, ASCAP, BMI, and CSAC are registries for songwriters. We have to pay these licensing fees, sometimes in excess of tens of thousands of dollars a year to one individual company. Um, we we have to pay these to play for the privilege of playing music in our venues. This money is on top of the money that we're actually paying the performers who are actually playing the music in our venues. And increasingly, you know, in the last two years, ASCAP and BMI have been bought by private equity, and they have, you know, been captured for for, uh, lack of a better term, to extract maximum profit. They are, you know, very, very, very litigious if you don't pay. They have sued bars for hundreds of thousands of dollars in licensing fees, and, you know, you have to pay it. As we've seen these pivot from artist-owned, artist-representative companies to private equity-owned, we've seen the increases go up. And again, it's all cutting into that one to five percent. Um, increased price sensitivity, we touched on a little bit. I think something that's really starting to affect us is an increase in charge-back requests, uh, from credit card companies. We've seen these on tickets, we've seen these on orders in the bar, really in the last year or so, this has become a big problem. Um, and it's compounded by the ticket reselling platform. So what we're seeing is scalpers will buy tickets on credit cards, mark them up for exorbitant exorbitant amounts on resale platforms. When the tickets don't sell, they will charge back the charge with their credit card, and we have been unable to stop a single one of these chargebacks. Even in cases where we can prove that the ticket was scanned in at our venue, the chargeback still goes through with the credit card companies. So now we've not only, and a lot of these chargebacks are happening months after the event, where the artist has already been paid out on the assumption that these tickets have been bought. So, you know, that's not money that we're able to claw back, that's hundreds of dollars that were, we've both lost in revenue and paid out the artist as if it came in. Um, this is becoming, again, a really big issue that we have not been able to stop any instance of at Bottle Rocket, and we've seen dozens of these in the last six months. We've also had a real increase in security needs. I think this is, again, goes across the country. Security is extremely expensive, it affects, or it affects our insurance premiums pretty severely. Um, and, you know, we're just seeing more and more need, whether it be bad fan behavior on the rise, uh, you know, artists requesting it, or just, you know, a general sense of security in the in the venue. We're also really starting to see, and and we talked about this yesterday, the the whole panel, um, in Pittsburgh specifically, issues with noise complaints and a struggle to have open conversations about compliance. You know, this is something that I've been annoyed with for quite a while. I know two years ago, we had a PLCB raid, uh, on Halloween with a packed bar full of people. They pulled everybody out of the bar, they counted everybody, we had no wrongdoing. Uh, I think the only thing we were cited for was our our liquor license wasn't properly framed. Um, but it disrupted one of the biggest nights of the year, and the reason for the uh, compliance check was a series of three-one-one, uh, sound complaints, noise complaints, that we had no knowledge of, that nobody had told us about, even in the aftermath of of the compliance check. It took me three weeks for the nuisance bar task force to tell me why they came. Um, and it it was because of simple three-one-one noise complaints that if we had received or if we had had any conversation with, we would have been able to mitigate, you know, night of, or, uh, you know, we would have been able to put things in place to to reduce those complaints. Instead, we had to wait for a raid to disrupt our business, and, uh, you know, we still had no conversation about when the when the complaints came, why they were coming, or anything. So, yeah, I I think, you can, you can move to the next slide, Adam. Thank you. So on the two sides here, like, we're starting to see a real vicious cycle start to take place, where the touring is starting to become more expensive, which at the smaller capacities resulting in lower or a fewer amount of shows. The shows that are happening are taking higher payments or higher upfront risk, and it's overall affecting, at least in our case at Bottle Rocket, our our ability to take risks on shows. And, you know, those risks are local performers, those risks are, you know, unproven bands who were trying to break into the scene, like to Adam's point about Twenty One Pilots. That, when he saw them playing at Alter Bar, they were not a known name, you know? That's a show that you're able to take because you you like the artist and you believe in them and you want to give them a chance. We're increasingly less able to give those chances to people, and I think that's really starting to affect the amount of local programming that we're able to offer in our venues, because every night that we are open needs to be a winner. You know, we need to 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 win on the the two hundred nights a a year that we have. On the other side, on the food and beverage side, I think we're starting to see a vicious cycle where people are drinking less, there's really sharp increases to our overhead, which is increasing the price, which is causing people to drink less, you know? And again, food and beverage sales are probably eighty percent of our margin in our business. So as that goes down even ten percent, it's starting to really, really affect us. Um, I think, next slide, Adam? Yeah, so to kind of summarize, it has never been more expensive to produce live in, uh, live events. Audience have never been less engaged with discovering new music, which is a core product that we offer. Audience have also never consumed less of our core product. At the same time, performance have never relied more on their touring income, and I think as Adam's numbers can illustrate, our spaces have never been more important to the city's overall economy and the vibrancy of its individual neighborhoods. Um, you know, these are things we're talking about across the country in NIVA, and what we're really starting to see is, you know, the conglomerates that are in our rooms or are nearby owning similar-sized rooms are, they're starting to become poised to gut the us, you know, in this opportunity, in in this moment of weakness. Um, when a conglomerate buys out a venue, the majority of the local staff is fired and replaced with national staff. You know, one programmer can book several rooms across the Midwest rather than, you know, me programming Bottle Rocket. The community outreach is absolutely dismal by these venues. Most of the times, they don't have local openers on shows, they do no work with the local music scene, they're completely detached. And I think just in general, you see far smaller local staffing. You see staff shared across several venues in a market, instead of each venue having their own staff. You know, you see the office staff be completely replaced by centralized staff. Um, and, you know, these conglomerates are are starting to become poised, and we're seeing it in cities like Nashville and Austin, where they're buying formerly independent venues, can, you know, turning them into a conglomerate room, and that music center, that center for the local music scene is gone forever. Um, so, you know, that's, that's what I'm passionate about, and that's, I've looked at venues across the country, especially in the last six months as part of my job at Bottle Rocket, and, you know, this is something we're not just seeing in Pittsburgh, but we're seeing across the country. But we're also seeing across the country, cities start to respond to these issues, uh, which I think Adam can touch on next, uh, with, you know, why we're here.
Yeah, um, and and I did, you know, I threw this in, I think it's really important, as Chris was talking about, um, you know, some of the challenges and really looking at, you know, again, when you see an independent venue, I I don't want people to think that, you know, we're raking in tons of money on shows, we're we're scraping by by razor-thin margins, and I think that this, um, this graphic really depicts, you know, the the really, like, some of the expenses and and revenue sources from these venues and what they look at, and like, looking at that, this is an example of a four-hundred-cap venue, and looking at like what some other fixed monthly costs are. Um, again, you're looking at things like rent or mortgage, if you rent or own your building, uh, if you have full-time staff, utilities, uh, your insurance, which, as Chris mentioned, has inflated dramatically at this point, um, any licenses and permitting, maintenance, um, all of these things start to add up, and then you look at the show level and those, the expenses tied to that show, um, whether you're paying them a percentage of the door, or you're paying them a guarantee, the staff that you have to employ, um, security, bar staff, uh, to be able to market the show, to be able to get people in rooms when we can, when we can fill them, if we can. Um, and then also, like, various production needs, if we need to hot, if we need to rent, um, uh, turntables for a DJ, if we need to rent gear from a from a local backline company, if we need to, um, procure, uh, parking variances to to be able to park the artists in front of our spaces. Um, all of these things start to add up, and then when you're looking at this on average, again, this is just assuming that you're selling fifty percent of the tickets sold, and, uh, what we're seeing is that generally is not even the case for for independent clubs. We're we're seeing that this is a much lower number. So looking at, you know, i- if on average you're doing a show in a four-hundred-cap club, and you're looking at seventy-eight hundred dollars in revenue on a fifteen-dollar ticket, which is a very, very appropriately-priced ticket versus what we're seeing at a stadium and an arena level, which are in the hundreds, if not thousands, of dollars. Um, I like to think that independent venues like to price fairly comparatively. So looking at that, all of that for, you know, three hundred dollars with a profit, uh, in in this specific example, I think really helps paint the picture of what we're looking at economically when it comes to actually running a venue. Um, I think it's important to pivot to here as part of this, because I think Pittsburgh also has a a history with with understanding the live entertainment ecosystem through the Pittsburgh Music Ecosystem Report. I think it's also important to look at where do venues fit into the grander scheme of of this ecosystem? Um, and I'd like to, you know, thank our full, our friends at the Music Venue Trust, which is a grassroots, uh, venue organization over in the UK that really helps to support and preserve grassroots venues and and independent venues in the UK, really helped explain kind of, you know, it's not just the venues and the artists that are impacted. And again, going back to the question of what happens when you take one piece of this equation out of the puzzle, or one piece of this puzzle out of the picture? Um, you start to lose all of these different services that that the entertainment industry really helps touch on, which is everything from, um, like I mentioned, the vinyl fin- vinyl manufacturing plants, there's the production companies, there are the recording studios, there are light designers and sound engineers, there's, uh, uh, gear rental, there's professional services like, uh, entertainment lawyers, manufacturers, accountants, uh, bar, and then you have, you know, there's so many different factions of the live entertainment ecosystem, I think, that exist, um, in in this entire industry. And so I think it's important to understand that when you remove one piece of that, one piece of that puzzle, what is the, what is the lasting impact when you aren't able to preserve what's right in front of you? Um, so I I think it's important to pull back in twenty eighteen when we, uh, when the Pittsburgh Music Ecosystem Report came out. Um, this was an initiative that was supported by, uh, the City of Pittsburgh and other and other key stakeholders. Um, and really, I think it's something to import, it's something important to note that because with that graphic that I mentioned before, what that report really helped uncover is that there are forty-two different subsectors of this industry that are really impacted, that includes venue owners and operators, and includes artists, but includes all these different factions of it. Um, and I think that it's important to note what the what the full swath and breadth of this ecosystem is. Um, back in, uh, June twenty twenty-five, we tried to do a reconvening of, uh, of the ecosystem report through a town hall to really just see what has happened in the last seven years since this report came out. And I think that what we learned is that we're still in the same boat that we were before, in this, that's seven years ago. So and and if anything, it's been astronomically more challenging. I think that what we learned is that, um, there's been a huge decentralization of resources within the within the arts community, within the entertainment community and its subsectors. Um, we've learned that there's still a huge, uh, communication barrier between all of us, uh, and understanding of resources and understanding of of each other as as our own subsectors. Um, and what we've learned is that, you know, the the local public investment is still in the same spot for, uh, for this conversa- or from the conversation in twenty eighteen, uh, which, again, looking at independence as a whole, there are, you know, I think we represent a lot of not not-for-profit, but we also look at for-profit music spaces that do not have the same resources, although we all operate in the same fashion. Um, and that, in turn, I think with everything that Chris had mentioned about the economics of everything, we're seeing that there are financial hardships across, uh, both, across every single faction of this, which is creating a lot more tension and friction between our own communities, that I think that there's just a need to reconvene and continue to find ways to financially support one another. Um, so I look at this as potentially, you know, a a need to to revisit and potentially reassess, um, the local ecosystem and what its health and needs are. Brandon, I hope I don't mind putting it on the spot, but I I want to pass it off to Brandon Lehman, who owns Little Giant. I think he's in a very interesting position as an artist, as a venue operator, as a rehearsal space, and also a community space with what he's been doing for the inter- uh, for the industry, for networking opportunities.
Yeah, um, so that's a lot of things, a rehearsal space, a recording studio, a music venue, a training space, it's a, it's a lot of things. Um, and, you know, like, now we really understand just how small the margins are for, uh, for a music, an independent music venue. And so when we opened, um, three years ago in the warehouse directly behind Bottle Rocket, and the only reason we're there is because of Chris, uh, we met up for a completely different reason and and ended up discovering that space, and and that's why we're there. Um, you know, really trying to think about, okay, if I have a show at the studio, that's from six PM to ten PM, what happens in the in the building when we don't have shows? What happens during the day, in the morning, everything? Um, so I wanted to really think about sort of activating, um, activating our space. And so, you know, now we operate sort of during the day and on non-show days as a rehearsal facility, not only for, uh, for local musicians to come in and and hone in on their craft, but touring musicians. We had Olivia Dean and, two weeks ago, who's on tour, Sabrina Carpenter, um, do a full production rehearsal for her show, uh, which was a big deal for us. We're, you know, a a local, a a local studio who was able to host a, uh, you know, a top one hundred artist, um, coming to town, which, uh, which, um, was big for us. Um, you know, operating as a as a recording studio, uh, to allow the musicians who, um, are playing shows and contributing, uh, participating in the scene to make new records and and hopefully, um, you know, get their music out there and published. Um, and then as well, sort of expanding to the fabric of the, um, you know, the the music community as a whole, you know, just in our little area, um, in Allentown and in Southside, we have, um, you know, my studio, we have Bottle Rocket, we have Club Cafe. Um, you know, our warehouse, uh, in Allentown also hosts a lot of, um, you know, flea markets and specialized markets and, uh, and other music events. Um, and we've, you know, as much as possible, we try to, um, you know, work together on things. We try to host meetings during the day at Club Cafe when they have their coffee shop open. Um, we try to send folks after a, uh, you know, an industry workshop we have at the studio, we try to send them to Bottle Rocket afterwards for for the after-party, and I think that a lot of that interconnectedity, um, is on us to continue fostering, and that stuff is just, you know, strength in numbers. It's the, you know, instead of DIY, DIT, do it together. Um, you know, that stuff is super important, and I think that's like what, um, I think Pitts, it it's sort of in our DNA, and I think like a lot of Pittsburgh venues are um, are pretty good at that, um, but sometimes it's it's tough to, um, uh, to to remember. But I think, like, really the idea is simple, that like, if the lights are off, um, nothing's happening. And so if we're able to activate our spaces and have the resources to do so outside of the typical, um, uh, you know, the typical showtimes, you know, from five PM to ten, eleven, twelve AM, um, we're sort of in a in a predicament now where we have to do that stuff. You know, we can't afford to to have our venues, um, you know, closed during the day. Um, so I think that collaboration is important, and and I think it's good to paint a picture of this venue-to-venue connectivity. It's not, you know, it's not just convenient, it's it's how we survive. Um, and, you know, starting to think about our venues as third spaces for people who spend a lot of time, uh, in these places. Um, and how can we, you know, impact not only, um, you know, from from our standpoint, we're, um, catering a lot to folks who are working in the industry, a lot of artists and producers and live sound engineers, and and a lot of that stuff, we're providing a space for them to hone on their cra- hone in on their craft, learn new things, um, connect with, you know, industry meetups and and community events, um, but also audiences who are just participating and, you know, consuming music and how we're able to kind of include all of them, uh, a- as much as possible, and I'll try to increase these margins, uh, as much as we can. So that's that.
Thanks. Um, and yeah, I mean, I think that, again, it really speaks to the need for these spaces to exist. I think also it's something that's important to to recognize, too, is just, um, as these community spaces, like, what do we contribute socially to these to these communities? And I think really in in an age where, like, everything is very digital-oriented, um, one thing remains true is that when we're hosting events, whether it's for the, whether it's community meetups, whether it's live events, like, these are galvanizing people together across multiple different disciplines, uh, race, ethnicity, et cetera. So, again, thinking about what happens and where that interconnectedness is lost when these spaces start to close ultimately. Um, and I think something to look at, to to zoom in a little bit more when we're talking about, you know, these spaces and and kind of how they're impacted in their local communities, I think one thing is, again, zooming in on impact, um, looking locally, and I think, uh, as as mo- as most of us here are for-profit entities, I think it's important to note that a lot of this data is is coming from the is coming from the support of the Greater Pittsburgh Arts Council and Americans for the Arts, but looking at us as a multiplier of this number, when you're looking at jobs supported in this industry, we're, from the Arts and Economic Prosperity Report, we're bringing in eighteen thousand jobs that were supported in 2022, and almost ninety-five hundred of them are directly from these organizations. These are people that work directly for the arts organizations, for the promoter, for the Performing Arts Center, et cetera. So when you look at that from the not-for-profit side and multiply that from our industry, again, maybe it's more of a need to understand the live entertainment ecosystem as a whole more, so that we know what we're all contributing collectively. Artist-supported, looking at the ecosystem report, granted that this is looking at local artists, and I think that it's also important to note that a lot of folks at this local level are producing events for local artists. From the ecosystem report, we saw that eleven hundred respondents were coming to answer the call of how to contribute to their music ecosystem. So these are all Pittsburgh-based artists that are coming from here, so it's eleven hundred people, and we're continuing to see that grow. Additionally too, I think it's important to note, like, what is the social impact of what we contribute? What happens when we go away? How do our communities feel that, how do our communities feel about the existence of these spaces in their community? Seeing that eighty-nine point two percent of arts and culture attendees are agreeing that it is an inspiring sense of pride when there is a neighborhood activity in an independent space or in an arts and entertainment facility. To speak to the point again of what happens if we go away, eighty-seven percent of respondents are saying that they would feel a huge sense of loss if these spaces were to go away and they're no longer available to the public. And additionally, like, eighty percent of respondents are agreeing that these are important institutions to their communities. So to kind of, again, to kind of summarize this in whole, looking through some of the challenges that we're dealing with to kind of, again, paint the picture, again, realizing that there's a declining attendance in small and mid-sized clubs, dealing with rising costs, inflation, corporate competition, predatory resale marketplaces, decreasing alcohol sales, fear of displacement is another thing too. I have a friend of mine in Nashville who had operated the Exit Inn for almost, that's a club that existed for almost fifty years. They had a developer come in and buy out the property and was planning to turn it into luxury condos. These are real issues that our venues deal with when they are not in ownership of their own space. So they are constantly in fear of what's going to happen if a developer wants to come in, and how they are looking at these spaces. So all things considered, as we're coming to the table today, really, again, and I think it was important to bring back the Pittsburgh Music Ecosystem Report, because a lot of what's next, I think, are real recommendations that still came from that report, that I think that are really valid, that can help. And ways to support, again, really, again, continue the conversation for prioritizing public investment into the live independent entertainment ecosystem. Looking at things like, how do we look at amusement tax reform for small and mid-sized independent venues? As Chris mentioned, we're looking at a one to five percent profit margin when there's profit. So the idea of a five percent amusement tax being the difference between profit or loss for these spaces to stay open is absolutely essential to look at, you know, how do we continue to contribute publicly to these spaces? And again, looking at this, this is not a new thing. We've seen this in other cities like Seattle, Washington, Baltimore, Maryland, Chicago, Illinois, that are creating exemptions for independent spaces. Additionally too, like, another way to look at this too, is how to use this revenue to help reinvest back into those that are contributing to it? And is it looking at ways like operational support? Is it looking at ways like sound improvement and assessment programs? New Orleans has a great program called the Tune Up Grant Program that helps with audio assessments within their own spaces, so that they can better be, they can be better sound, they can have better sound attenuation, and have licensed professionals come to look at their space, so that we're not dealing with these sound complaint issues. Additionally, safety trainings, again, we are seeing us as community spaces and trying to do right by our community. I think safety is a huge piece of what we do, and understanding who's in the room and how we can help those that are coming into our rooms. So looking at, this is a potential avenue to help support independent spaces. Additionally too, again, just given the complex nature of our industry, of the ecosystem at large, really looking at, how do we develop some sort of task force or commission that can really help dive into these issues deeper and really help explore the ecosystem as a whole? We're starting to see that there are cities like our neighbors out east in Philadelphia are looking at, you know, they're calling themselves the original music city. I think that Pittsburgh can do it better. But there's, we're starting to see that there are these task forces that are being developed through cities, through cities like Philadelphia, like Cleveland, Ohio, Austin, Texas, Seattle, Washington, and so forth, that are really looking at, really looking deeper at how they can support their ecosystems through the support of city council. Additionally too, I think a key partner in all this, and again, looking at these as recommendations from the Pittsburgh Music Ecosystem Report, is how we can interface with city departments like the Office of Nighttime Economy and giving them a clear role in the city code. I think that it's important, sorry, it's important that we look at the Office of Nighttime Economy as a critical partner in this, and I think that as of now, looking at music venue, looking at the Office of Nighttime Economy as a positive impact or change that can help music venue operators, and providing them a greater toolkit, besides, you know, looking at things like non-compliance and enforcement, and really, sorry, and defining its role more clearly in city code, and having more measurable objectives and collaborative authority. I think that would really empower the office to serve as a consistent advocate and resource for independent venues in the greater music ecosystem, sorry. And additionally too, you know, while we're looking at some of these bigger items, I think there's also small wins in the interim that we can look at that can help strengthen the ecosystem as a whole. Like I mentioned, I think that there's still a need for understanding within the own ecosystem. So looking at things like artist parking zones and parking initiatives, Nashville has a great park and play program that encourages artists that are playing on Broadway, and it helps support the artists, that they don't have to incur that cost, that ultimately will help economically and keep more money in the musicians' pockets, out of the, in the venues' pockets, if they're paying, if they're having to pay for parking variances. And we're seeing other cities that are starting to do that. Looking at things like, you know, a centralized event hub, so that we can look at how venues can stay connected of what's happening within the city. And additionally too, looking at, you know, again, when we're talking about public opportunities, looking at these independent spaces to prioritize them for spaces of civic engagement, trainings, et cetera, and just really looking at these, and creating more equity in the space of independent venues to be seen as these, as truly community partnerships, where we're building more partnership between business districts and the venues that reside in them. I want to, again, thank you for your time here. I want to also open it up for other anecdotes from some of our other venues that are represented today, if anybody has a story to tell or...
Yeah, I got a bit of a timely one. So, similar to Adam's story with Twenty One Pilots, so, my name's Pierce Murato. I currently work as the Marketing Design and Box Office Director for Pittsburgh Winery. Previously though, I was in a similar role for Gray Area Productions, who we ran the Rex Theater. We also developed artists at smaller venues around the city, did some festivals and so on. In that time, we worked with thousands of artists, but one is super topical, because it's Billy Strings, and he's playing tonight and tomorrow night at Sold Out PPG. And so when we first started booking him, it was 2014, and I actually just found out from Matty in the hallway that Club Cafe actually booked him before that. But yeah, so we started booking him at the pre-renovation Thunderbird, when it was still a two hundred cap room. I think like about forty people showed up. We lost money, but we brought him back, put him at the James Street Ballroom, where he sold maybe seventy tickets, lost money, we brought him back. Eventually, sold out James Street, sold out the Rex, played, headlined Feastable in McKee's Rocks, sold out the Roxian, and then eventually kind of left us for the bigger guys, which is like, you know, a little bittersweet, but you like to see it. And, yeah, so, hold on, I got a note here. And yeah, so my point here isn't necessarily to say that, like, we as individuals deserve any credit for his sort of rise, but rather that like, a series of independent venues nationwide helped him to develop into who he is today. Like, the guy literally slept on my couch after Pittsburgh shows, I fed him breakfast out of my own pocket, and that's just the kind of attention and care that the big corporate live music guys are just never gonna give. They don't care to, and they won't do it. And if you notice, let's see, three of the five venues that I just mentioned are no longer around, and one of the two remaining ones is no longer independent, so there's clearly, you know, there's a disparity there that I just think is worth highlighting.
Yeah, and to that same point too, I think I mentioned in the presentation here, like, Pittsburgh is so proud when we can say, this person is from here, like, Michael Keaton just got a star the other week, and Mac Miller was Khalifa, and Halsey, and even people that like, go to college here for a short portion of time, like, role model, who Adam booked before he got big. Like, we, as Pierce said, Pittsburgh like, really, really cares about the artists we bring through, and I say it all the time, I don't think anyone would be in this industry if it was to make money. And we did not save Club Cafe to make money. We saved Club Cafe because it's so historical. Norah Jones, Jean Mary, Lisa Loeb, Chuck Prophet, the Abbott Brothers, St. Paul and the Broken Bones, you could go on and on. Sorry, I'm not a very comfortable microphone speaker, but one of my favorite stories, I think a couple weeks ago, my boyfriend and I went to see Lucy Dacus, and she had sold out the Benedum, and in between her songs, she said, you know, "Back in Pittsburgh, because of a very small room that I sold out years ago, and it was Club Cafe, and if it wasn't for fans that came to that, I probably wouldn't be standing here right now." And thankfully, someone took a video of it, because I was too busy crying, but it's like moments like that, where artists want to keep coming back because of the treatments that they got from small venues, and probably wouldn't be in positions they are now without the care and support of Pittsburgh's fans in these rooms, so we can't have them go away.
Yeah, so, my name's Adam Klenovich. I help run Haven, which is the first music venue to open in Oakland in over twenty years. Similar to everybody's point, you know, all these music venues that closed in Oakland, all the music venues that closed in the South Side, and across Pittsburgh, you know, Pittsburgh, in Oakland, you used to have bands, you know, Nirvana, you had Pink Floyd, you had The Police. I always tell people when they come and play that aren't from town, they come and they're like, "Oh, I'm not familiar with Oakland, I'm not familiar with the neighborhood." I'm like, "Yeah, The Police played, you know, two hundred-person room, two blocks down the street." You know, you had U2 and all of these other bands that came through the decade and other venues throughout our neighborhood. And then for twenty years, you had nothing. And similarly, me and Adam, kind of our funny backgrounds, you know, ten, probably over ten years apart, running music venues in our living rooms and in our basements, for twenty years, that's what happened in Oakland. You didn't have anywhere where bands could go and play music. So it just went into backyards and basements, and wherever, you know, students and residents could find space to house them. And, you know, that's not really the best environment for bands and for attendees to go, where it's, you know, limited space, it's, you know, hot, audio sucks, there's no lighting, security, you know, everything that goes into the downfalls of trying to run a music venue in a house is kind of what Oakland had for twenty years. And, you know, we've come through the community, we're an entirely volunteer-based venue. If we were trying to make money, that would be nearly impossible, because all of our staff is volunteers, we don't have a liquor license. Similarly to the metrics that, you know, Adam and Chris were showing, seventy-five percent of the money going to the bands, that's, you know, twenty-five percent that we're getting, we're barely able to make rent, and if we had to pay any staff, we would be losing thousands of dollars a month, unfortunately. But from the community in Oakland, and, you know, from people sitting at this table here, we've been able to open and be able to bring music back to Oakland, and I think that just goes to show that, you know, Pittsburgh is a lot stronger than a lot of these challenges that we've outlined in this presentation, that we could really go and fight against, you know, these big conglomerates and these other, you know, industry challenges, that we're a strong city, and that we have, you know, deep appreciation for live music and live art in our city, and that's nothing that's gonna stop us.
Yeah, and I think, you know, to kind of summarize my thoughts on this, I feel like a lot of this came out when Club Cafe first closed. That's when Adam and I first really started talking about this, because it was a real outpouring of support from people, and I think a lot of people were really surprised by that and really disappointed. You know, I think a lot of people come to shows, they come to the Sold Out Friday, and they come to the Sold Out Saturday, and they think, "Oh, this place is doing amazing." You know, they're not there on Monday and Tuesday, when there's ten people there, you know. I know that there's a lot of support for this in the city, I know there's a lot of support from this, from local businesses, and, but the reality of the industry is getting harder, you know, more than it is a failing of any of our individual businesses. This is an industry-wide problem that we're seeing. And, you know, I think in other cities, we are starting to see the cities take proactive steps to become partners in this, they see the value of it. You know, I know in Baltimore, I was talking with Bob about this yesterday, Baltimore, they have a ten percent admission tax, they have specific areas within the city with independent venues where that admission tax is completely waived, or it's rebated to those venues. You know, Cleveland is very, very proactive with their independent music scene, and as a result, they have one of the best independent music scenes in the country. You know, seventy-two percent, so one in every four of us lost money last year. I think a lot of us were able to weather that, and I would say, that's seventy-five percent of us, one in four, or three in four of us, that's with the, you know, staff, or, you know, the people that own the venue not really getting paid anything. You know, at Bottle Rocket, we barely broke even, I was making thirty-five thousand dollars a year, and that is, and, you know, it's a tough life, but I did it because I really believed in it, and I loved it, and I wanted it to continue. You know, so when you see that three-fourths, I would guess probably, yeah, three-fourths of venues are losing money, and the one-fourth that isn't, the owner's probably not making a ton of money either, to be that one-fourth that's able to stay open. You know, we're able to weather one or two years like that, I don't know if the industry or any of our venues are gonna be able to weather three, five, six years of that. And I think, you know, the venues that are losing money, they're losing it by slim margins, they're losing it three to five percent. It's, that's where the five percent amusement tax can become a huge swing, and become a huge difference to us. You know, it's the difference between staying open and being closed, and I think a lot of the time, it frustrates me, I see people not, you know, "Oh, we love, we love Club Cafe," and they say it after they closed, but, you know, we need the support when we're open, and when we're still alive and still, you know, fighting to maintain the spaces that we love and the scene that we love. So I think that's really where the impetus for us as a group of people came together to want to talk about this and to willing to be open. I mean, it is not easy to sit in front of your colleagues and be like, "My business is failing, and my business is struggling," or, you know, "My business needs help." So I applaud everybody that we've reached out to, the city, everybody that's here, the venues that aren't here, but have, you know, given their support to what we're talking about, because it's a difficult topic to talk about, but it is a sector-wide issue that we're starting to see, and, yeah, I'm hopeful that the city will be able to be a partner in helping us fix it.
So, if you guys don't mind, like, to open up to council members, if that's okay? And I do want to note that Councilman Strasburg joined us virtually and now in person, as well as Councilman Gross was on, and, yeah, we've been joined by those members. I think Councilman Mosley, you were the first here, if you are ready to ask a couple questions here? I know you're a man that cares deeply about the arts here.
Absolutely, and first, I want to thank you, Councilman Stralyn, for pulling this together. I want to thank all the speakers for a really detailed and thoughtful presentation, you know, definitely gave me a great understanding, a much better understanding of the ecosystem, and also, you know, had a couple, you know, moments of nostalgia as well, particularly talking about Oakland, you know, it brought me back to the first concert I ever attended at the Syria Mosque, back in April of nineteen ninety. It was a Big Daddy Kane Digital Underground with Tupac as a backup dancer at third base. And that's a memory that, you know, lives with me to this day, and it kind of speaks to how important these venues are. I wish I could have been there in person, but I definitely wanted to make sure that I was able to participate virtually. I have a couple questions. My first question was around, you know, that three-fourth number, is that a national, something that we also see around the nation, or are there cities where, you know, that three-fourth loss ratio isn't the case, and the independent venues are finding themselves to be more profitable?
So, on a national statistic, I believe the stat is sixty-four percent were not profitable, so we were actually below the national average. There are state-by-state reports on stateoflive.org that really details a state-by-state, but because of the respondents in the state of Pennsylvania, we were able to really grasp that we are below the average in terms of profitability. So, it is very alarming to see that we are in this state versus the national number.
And you talked about, you know... And, and you talked about, you know, particular cities as well as particular, you know, policies that are doing a better job at aligning their, their ecosystem. Um, are there particular, you know, policies that you think that we should prioritize to strengthen the ecosystem, you know, more than others? Because there was, you know, a, a pretty comprehensive list of, of different tactics, so to speak, that other cities are taking. Um, are there any of those that really stick out as ones that we should kind of move to the front of the queue and, and focus on with a higher sense of priority?
I think, I think at least, I think starting the conversation and trying to build more of a pathway to, uh, to having more of a relationship with, with city council. Whether it's through, um, some form of commission or task force to really help understand what the needs of the city are. As well as again, uh, looking at amusement tax reform as a way to help lighten the burden for, for some of these independent venues that we've been seeing. And whether it's in specific entertainment districts, um, in, in different cities. But really, um, in the sense of, of creating more of an urgency to have a pathway to having more of a conversation with, with the city and city council. I think is, is the first great step.
Okay, great. And, and, and we, in the Office of Nighttime Economy did come up. Has there been experiences with them? Um, you know, have you worked with the office, any of the folks around the table have worked with it? Um, what has the experience been? And, you know, any specific things or things you want to elaborate on that was already stated of, of, of what you would like to see? The role of the nighttime economy be specifically around strengthening this independent venue ecosystem?
Uh, I can speak holistically and I encourage folks that have, uh, that have interfaced with that office to, to also talk. But, um, at a holistic, at a holistic view, I mean, again, looking at things like, um, being, being under public safety and looking at things like, uh, compliance and variances, et cetera. Like it really is looking at, you know, looking at other cities in their offices of nighttime economy where they're positioned within their city. Several that we're seeing are within offices of commerce or, or economic development. And looking at again, even just within the title itself, um, nighttime economy is really, I think emblematic of, uh, really what we're, you know, the, 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 the need for more resources within that office to help us advocate at a, at a larger level, I think is, is critically important. Um, and if any other folks have.
Yeah, I, I worked with the Office of Nighttime Economy after our Halloween PLCB compliance check. Um, you know, and they kind of were in a similar position as me, where they weren't able to get a ton of answers, uh, from the nuisance bar task force about why we had a compliance check. You know, it took two to three weeks to get any information about that. And when we did, it was just, you know, oh, we got, we, there was a backlog of noise complaints. I, I think that's something that all the venues at the table have discussed some, uh, issue with is, is having clear communication with the, the PLCB or the nuisance bar task force or whoever it may be. And I think that's where we see the Office of Nighttime Economy is really being able to have a role to be a conduit to, to those types of conversations. Uh, you know, I, I don't think anyone here wants to be a nuisance in their neighborhood. I know none of us don't want to be a nuisance in our neighborhood, right? We want to be good neighbors. We want to be, uh, positive spaces. We don't want to keep our neighbors up at night. And, you know, there's venues in this city that have spent tens of thousands of dollars in sound remediation to remediate issues with, with sound complaints. But it's difficult to know what exactly the issues are, where exactly the issues are coming from, um, and, and what exactly we can do to fix them. Because there's just no interfacing with the, the wider 311. So I think that's where we see the Office of Nighttime Economy being able to have more of an immediate role is being able to be that interface. And being able to give us specifics and, and either connect us with the neighbors to have conversations about that. Or just assist us in, you know, the, the, the design of the sound paneling and that, you know, where exactly should we be orienting this? Where, where are we getting complaints from? What hours, what, what locations? Um, because it's completely opaque to us right now. We, we have no insight into those at all, other than, you know, 40 uniformed officers coming to our venues at the dead of night and lining our customers up against the wall to count them. Uh, I mean, that, you know, that, that's not how you want to spend your Halloween.
Right, I, I just have two quick questions. One, I'm just, is out of just pure curiosity, um, because this is something that I've, I've become aware of, just only recently. Is, is the chargeback phenomenon, you know, what generally, you know, percentage is that impacting, um, you know, profits? You know, because I was in a, in a conversation with a, with a venue operator from Cincinnati, um, who's been, um, getting, uh, I guess, you know, being encouraged to look, look at Pittsburgh as a, as a particular place to look at expanding what, what they're doing. Uh, they have like a really cool venue called Cinema Over the Rhine where it's a 90s hip hop R&B themed, um, bar and performance spot. Very much obviously just a part similar to all of your, um, places. But they had talked about this chargeback thing, like how much is, is that affecting? I understand that's part of the Dodd-Frank, uh, national legislation, which, you know, gives to consumers, um, you know, a lot of latitude with, where people can go out. And, you know, like at a lot of the type of clubs that often frequent, you could get bottle service, you know, on Friday. And then on Monday, you call the, you call the bank and say, you know, you know, this was a, a nefarious charge on my, on, on my card. And then, you know, basically, um, get the money back. So, uh, how, how much is, is this affecting you? And, you know, how do you see it, you know, long term, you know, being a detriment to, to profits moving forward?
Uh, I, I think it's dependent on the space. Because I think also, um, you know, what we're, we may likely not be seeing this at the like truly, like, you know, 300 capacity, 250 capacity and under. Um, and I don't want to speak, if anybody else has, has had experience with chargebacks. I mean, at, um, at the club level here and some clubs that we've worked with that are 500 to 1,000 capacity. We're seeing anywhere from like, uh, you know, two to 5% of chargebacks happening after the fact. But what we're seeing is, um, predominantly these, these are coming from these predatory resellers. Where they are, they are bulk buying, um, you know, uh, batches of tickets, whether it's in quantities of eight, 10, 50, uh, or more. And what we're seeing is that when they're not selling them, they're immediate, when they're not selling them after the fact, they're going back to their credit card companies and submitting chargebacks for those that have not been sold. And they are winning on almost 99% of them, uh, in our case. I think we had a, we had a sold out, uh, 600 person show, um, Tanner Adele. Um, and what we found was that, uh, about, what was it? About a third of tickets were bought speculatively or bought deceptively on the secondary resale marketplace from ticket brokers or scalpers. And, uh, we, from a, again, from a sold out show, only had about 250 to 300 people show up at the event, um, which we were staffed for a full show. And then after the fact, we saw about a 10% uh, chargeback rate from those that were, uh, that were bought from the secondary resale marketplace.
And I think too, it's important to say that, you know, it's not just the tickets and the, the cost of the chargeback on the tickets that's affecting the business. It's the fact that now there's 300 less people in the room buying, you know, food and beverage, uh, which is where we make most of our money. And again, a lot of these chargebacks are coming months after the fact, where we've already paid the performer on the assumption that these tickets were sold and that we collected the revenue. And now, you know, not only, so now not only have we lost the money that we paid the performer, now we lose the revenue. And we've lost the revenue in the room on the food and beverage sales. Um, it's, it, it's tough to put a number on because it's so complex that like, you know, all those numbers added together. Um, but I think too, on the chargebacks, we're starting to see it, it, you know, the ticket scalping has always been a very sketchy business with very low overhead, right? You only have to buy the ticket. Now it's become almost a no loss business for these people where they can, they can buy tickets in huge quantities and start to really affect our show inventory. I mean, Adam's talking about 1/3 of the entire show being bought speculatively because there's no risk. Because they know that they can charge back any tickets that are not purchased at a higher price, right? So there, there's, it's, it's taken what was already a sketchy business and, and a great margin business where their only expense is advertising to beat us and beat us in Google search ranks and that type of thing. And it's made it a no risk business because there's, you know, the risk used to be, oh, I'm going to buy tickets that aren't going to sell. Now if the tickets don't sell, you get the money back anyway.
To add to that too, it doesn't matter if those 50 to 100 people don't show up, we still have to pay the amusement tax on that.
Yeah.
So all of those advance tickets goes into our revenue of what we have to pay out for taxes, even if 50 less people are in the room and we're not making those bar sales and food sales.
And we're remitting the amusement tax usually the night after the event. I mean, it's built into Bottle Rocket, it's built into the artist settlements. So again, that's revenue that we've paid out. We've paid the 5% amusement tax on those tickets as if they were sold. The tickets are charged back, we have no mechanism to get that 5% back from the city. But we lose the 5% that we collected.
Yeah, and, and my final question is, is are there things that cities or venues that you know of are doing to address, uh, the public safety challenges? The safety challenges in general? You know, you spoke about, you know, how much that impacts the bottom line as far as the cost of, of security and safety. Are there innovative things that, that folks are doing or collaboration with local governments, uh, working with local law enforcement and such? Um, to, to kind of defray, uh, the, the cost of, 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 of security?
Um, I think we've seen some NIVA members start to work with cities to get, uh, training paid for, you know, staff training, uh, ramp training, sexual assault training, active shooter training paid for via the amusement tax revenue or, or similar revenue. Um, a lot of the times we've seen that go through an Office of Nighttime Economy where they're coordinating it and reaching out to the venues and, and holding the training as like large group sessions. Sometimes that's been done with law enforcement being the trainers. Um, so we have seen a little bit of that. I don't know if Adam has seen anything else.
No, I was, I was going to say the same thing. A lot of this is in conjunction with Office of Nighttime Economy to, to build more, uh, safety programming around our spaces. Again, like Chris mentioned, through whether it's through, uh, active threat, uh, CPR, stop the bleed, um, sound attenuation, et cetera. Um, so again, very, very thankful to the Office of Nighttime Economy for being a resource in that and, and seeing that in other cities as well that are, that have offices of nighttime economy.
With that, um, exhausts my questions. I really thank you for, for coming today and for such a detailed presentation about an issue, um, that, that's very important to me. Not only, you know, as, as I said, I'm, I'm not just, you know, a lover of music, I'm also a performer myself. And I've performed at some of the venues that, that you've mentioned that no longer exist, like the Shadow Lounge. Um, so, uh, I'm definitely on board, uh, to, to work, uh, with, with Councilperson Strahlin. And I really appreciate your leadership, Councilman, for, for pulling this together. And, you know, consider me on board, uh, to be a part of any task force or any effort to promote this. I think it's very important for the city as, as a city that's looking at growing again. Um, and, and, and when you talk about the history, you know, of this city, uh, you know, for me, and, 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 you know, the kind of the oral history of, of my family, you know, goes back to the, the golden age of jazz and all the venues in the Hill District and all over the city. You know, I spent my youth hearing stories from my dad about, you know, the 1940s and the 1950s and the 1960s in Pittsburgh. And seeing Miles Davis and John Coltrane, you know, and Charlie Parker, uh, you know, and, and, and Thelonious Monk. And, you know, obviously the jazz greats from Pittsburgh, Earl Father Heinz, Mary Lou Williams. And, you know, today Roger Humphries who's still around. Um, so I'm, I'm totally on board. I understand, you know, not only for this ecosystem and the economy of the ecosystem, how important it is. But how important it is, uh, for cities that are competing with other cities around the country, around the world for talent, for young people, uh, to grow their economies and, and really, you know, uh, move forward and really, you know, make our city, you know, the best that it can be. And, and, and as competitive, you know, with any, you know, city around the world. So thank you so much and I defer back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, next up, uh, Councilman Strasburg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you all. I, um, I was listening in, as mentioned, virtually on my way from another event. And so I would, I did catch, you know, the, the bulk of the presentation prior to the discussion. And I'll, I'll start by saying that, um, uh, I, I really, really value our independent venues. I am in a season of my life where I don't get to go as often as I used to. But, um, but I know that that is, that is emblematic of what was in here, that the people who, when, you know, when the venue disappears, it, they realize how much they've taken it for granted. Um, because you feel a certain pride in a city that has a strong independent venue and a strong independent music culture. Um, and I also was reflecting as, as this conversation was happening that, um, you know, it's obvious that art, art and artists can, are an economic driver. And the venues are often forgotten, right? We talk about it. I was thinking about, you know, people, people have been sending me Ireland's experiment with, uh, universal basic income-esque kind of program. Um, produced for every $1 spent on artist, a $1.39 what came back in economic development. But again, like, we were so hyper focused on the artist, what is part of that ecosystem? So I think this is a really important conversation to ensure that the full ecosystem and everyone who's part of that, when it comes to music and, and independent music is included. Um, and, sorry, lots of reflections and then I'll actually get to some questions and ideas. But the other, the other, the other reflection is just that audience, uh, lack of audience engagement and participation doesn't seem to be unique to this industry, right? We, we see, um, everything from dance to opera to theater struggling right now, to the point where I know public theater and city theater are teaming up. And after experimenting with like free childcare and free transportation, like they're teaming up in a certain way. So I guess I'll, I'll start with that with my, my first question. Well, just to continue that a little bit further, you know, there's this acknowledgement that on the one hand, we're, we're, we, we as, we as, we as, I don't know, at least Americans are exhibiting more sort of non-social and antisocial behavior at the same time when we need it the most, right? Like we all need to be together in these third spaces. So I don't know how to get beyond that and how to get back those, those audiences and get the new audiences. But, but what I was, what I was hearing a lot of, a little bit of was the decentralization of resources. And could you talk a little bit about what is already happening and what could be an opportunity? Whether we, you know, whether it's something that we support or, or just is happening, um, that might be akin to a partnership between a public theater and city theater? What, what, what more is, is, um, is an opportunity within music, independent music venues and independent venues in general for, for that kind of collaboration?
Yeah, I mean, um, I, I think that again, with like the Pittsburgh Music Ecosystem Report really like showed us again, all of that. The, the notion that there is this like need, there is this decentralization. I think what we're seeing is that, um, there's just a general lack of connectivity between artists and venues and other key stakeholders in the community. I think having, I think what we're seeing is that there is more of a need for this like cross collaborative effort between every piece of the puzzle. And again, like our issue, like you mentioned, our issue is not the same, or is the same as others in our, others in the arts, uh, arts and culture space, entertainment, et cetera. I think just having, uh, to me, there's a couple of different pieces again, like looking at, you know, again, event discovery as a, as a, an audience participation as an issue. You know, looking at centralized events hubs so that people know, people, there's not one singular source of, hey, if I'm looking to go out tonight as a, as a consumer, where do I go? What are the things that I can look for? What are, like, what's my flavor of the week, so to say? As venue operators having a better understanding of what's happening in the town around us. So that way, if I know that, um, the winery is booking a bluegrass band on, on that night, maybe we should look at other alternative programming on, on that same night if we're looking at that. So just, so that ultimately at the same time, like we're not competing against one another, but also looking at ways to cross promote and cross collaborate. Because I think that that's one thing that's starting to innately happen because of that of just venue, either venues and promoters participating within one another or venues participating with other venues on, on specific collaborations. But at the same time too, um, centralized resources for like what are the physical mediums that are out there for artists and venues and other creatives to tap into? Whether that's, um, work, ideas for workshops and educational resources. Uh, for example, like I tell artists all the time that, or local artists that are, uh, coming through our room all the time. You know, when you're playing a show, again, uh, the venues, the promoters are contributing to these performance rights organizations, the ASCAP, BMIs or CSACs. Um, giving them the notion of, hey, when you play this show in our, in your room, make sure that if you are a registered performing rights, uh, artist or registered with a PRO, that you're submitting your live, uh, setlist to these PROs so that they know the royalties that we are contributing. They are then ultimately coming back to the artists that are playing on these stages. So the notion of like having more, um, resources around how the, how the ecosystem can support one another and that we can be more collaborative. Because I think I like, like the, the phrase that keeps going into my mind is that this is an ecosystem, not an ego system. And I think if people, like getting that notion out of the way and like building more of what Brandon said, a DIT mentality. I think just more, um, centralized platforms for being able to share resources within one another, I think is, is a great first step.
Yeah, and I think too, you know, venues with And I think too, you know, venues within the city, we are working together. I know later today, I'm announcing a show at Pierce's Venue that, that's a performer that played Bottle Rocket and their career has grown and they're ready to play in a larger room. And we got the opportunity to bring them back to the city, but in a larger room at Pierce's Venue. But I think, you know, the existence of NIVA in general is kind of, that, that's where the conversation started. I think before COVID, I didn't own a venue before COVID, so I can only speak to what I've heard, but you know, there, there is real competition between, I would say the people in this room or the venues that existed at the time probably would not have been willing to, to speak with each other or share or, you know, advocate together. And I think NIVA has done a lot of work to get us comfortable talking with each other, realize that we are all facing the same issues. You know, larger conglomerates have entire lobbying arms. We do not, we have ourselves, but we do have the power of numbers, right? So getting us all in the room and getting us comfortable with these topics, NIVA's been a great resource at, you know, asking Milwaukee, oh, what's working with your city council? What are things you've been able to do? Seeing what they've been able to do in Texas with their, they have an entire live music office and segment that is devoted to their independent venues in, in the entire state of Texas. And so I think just, you know, that, that's kind of, that was the drive behind NIVA and we're really starting to see it work and we're starting to see venues across the country to have meetings like this with their city councilors, their state representatives to, to start to inflict change. I mean, I think like Adam said, we're larger than the airline industry, we're larger than the beer industry. Those are industries that have massive, massive lobbying arms behind them and efforts. We don't need to do that or want to do that, but we do want to start advocating for ourselves.
I think one other thing that I wanted to add to that could potentially be an avenue to explore as well is like, you know, I think looking at other cities and how their, how their ecosystems are, have evolved and what they look like, but also looking at opportunities at other nearby markets to create more of like an artist incubator avenues that like, for example, we produced a show at Brillo Box last night that was worked on with a Cleveland music incubator called Cleveland Rocks Past Present Future, done in tandem with Live Music Society, which is a international organization to support live independent music as well as Detour, which is a independent organization that supports and routes tours through independent rooms with the collective network. That in itself, I think helping create the pipeline, not only here locally, but also regionally as well, so that we can help put our footprint in the ground as being a, a cultural incubator and being able to expand that beyond so that we can figure out, how can we support artists that are here? Because ultimately at the end of the day, like we want them to, we want them to come here, we want them to be able to tour outward, but we also want them to, that retain them here. So how do we then, as a city and as culture bears, progress that conversation and progress the notion of creating more like incubation around different markets that are, that are nearby that have healthy ecosystems as well?
Yeah.
Just to kind of piggyback off that a little bit too. Another reason why I think that's so important is because a lot of the issue we face when competing against the bigger corporate guys like Live Nation is they do buy up almost like whole tours. So then when it comes time for us, there's just not even a space for us to put an offer in anymore because they have that whole pipeline already established through their, you know, their venues. So this would be sort of the indie version of that.
I mean, there's so much that hopefully can be discussed at a future meeting where we're really drilling down and saying, what are these small wins to be able to not just build trust, but start to actually build momentum? And I'm glad that this is, this conversation is taking place because it really does take persistence to keep it front of mind with us as council members who are dealing with a panoply of other issues. And so I hope that will continue. I mean, we do need to get ourselves organized and figure out who all should be at the table outside of city government even too. But, you know, ideas like, imagine if the artists who, you know, you host at your house and slept on your couch and then make it big, like that could be a branding opportunity for them to say, I'm giving back to X, you know, revolving loan fund that goes back into this amazing venue support system or something like that. Like that could be a branding for them if they could get on board with that. I'm sure they would. And also this idea of, you know, this smart utilization of space during off hours, you know, what if, what if there could be an even expansion of that with burgeoning, you know, service industry or food industry operators who are also struggling? I mean, there's so many opportunities. And then, you know, I know we've talked with Allison and I have talked about the, your thoughts on the nuisance bar task force and some of the changes that, and opportunities there to, to really make smart, smart reforms to make it what it should be and not what it shouldn't be, which is the kind of current, current status quo. And I think, you know, we, we do really need to just drill down into some of these ideas, the, the exceptions to the tax, the centralized event hub, like these are, they're possible. They just, we just need to kind of operationalize them and make them happen, not just at the local level, but at multiple levels of government. There was, there was, there was one more thing I was thinking. It sounds as if, so it sounds as if the music ecosystem original report, which sort of identified the need for one leader locally to run that, like to run it and carry it forward, has sort of evolved and it is, is where we are today. Is there still a need for that position or are we, are we kind of, there, would you like to speak to that? Okay.
Yes. I think that's the one thing that I really, I see so much heart, so much dedication, so much desire to move these things forward, but look at everything they're facing to just run their business. How can they run an ecosystem? This is what's really missing for our Office of Nighttime Economy is to have that, that industry collective that has the voice, that they, you know, has the time and the energy to just dedicate to that. And then within the city to have the structures that support that. Not, I didn't introduce myself for the record though, but Allison Harndon with the Office of Nighttime Economy. And we, we are a liaison within the city for food, beverage and entertainment businesses. So there is a real need to have structure. In fact, the reason why this position was created 12 years ago was to kind of formalize collective approach within the city to supporting this economic engine that this is and, and keeps these dollars within this city. And what is changed is that there was so much turnover between, even in those first two years, that part, before I came on board exactly 10 years ago this week, there was an initiative to have, the recommendation of the report was to have a, an alliance that had the different departments represented as well as people from the industry and creating this position, that then we can just bake everything in to policy and with a lens of nighttime economy. There are part, you see the complexity of just this one industry segment. This is just part of the nighttime economy and it's what brings in so many dollars to this city. It's a really unique city. I've worked in 50 cities all over the country and Pittsburgh is one that has so many independent restaurants, cafes, bars, music venues, and they're, they have a great need. They are not these corporate conglomerates that have a marketing person and all this staff that can do all the things that they do as one person. And so they need a lot of support from the city and they need me to help them figure out problems and, you know, work out the issues between neighbors and provide those trainings that their staff needs. So this is, it's, it's a structural problem, I feel like, and that we have an opportunity to really shore up a good structure that supports not just this industry segment, but the whole nighttime economy. Nighttime economy is where people who work nine to five are now spending their dollars. They're spending their dollars and it's staying here and not going to some corporate office in Dallas. That's, that's a real strong economy that, that keeps feeding itself. So I, I think we need to look at restructuring some things.
Absolutely. And offering the support that's necessary for, for the advocacy that you don't have the time or resources to do, which is, but it is so necessary to keep it, you know, keep it, keep the ball rolling. And this, this idea of cross pollination among the nighttime economy businesses and we call it shared services, right? Like at some point when, before I was involved in local government, the city and the county decided to have one big 911 call center. Like that's shared services, it's not wasting money on separate different services. And that same thing, I think is a huge opportunity here too. So, okay, I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And both Councilwoman Warwick and Councilwoman Gross did have to step out, but they, they're both very excited about this and, and, you know, very, very appreciative of the presentation here. Actually, last night, Councilwoman Warwick and I were at Bottle Rocket together. So, you know, I think we, we all understand the, you know, the importance here of, of these independent venues. I really want to thank you for your, your presentation. There's a lot that I didn't know and I'm continuing to learn a lot more about this. You know, I have a background in bartending, a general idea of like how like a lot of nightlife stuff works, but the economics of, of actually your venues, something that I, I really didn't understand and I really appreciate you guys kind of walking, walking us through that. I definitely didn't understand, you know, how ticket fees really don't go to you by and large. That was, that was kind of news to me. And also this, the, was it ASCAP and CSAC? I'd never heard of that before. That's wild.
Yeah. Most people have never heard of it.
Most artists don't even know about it.
Most artists don't even know. Yeah. If you, if you put on one event in this city, you will get an email from them asking for several thousands of dollars and then you will have heard of them.
Wow. That's wild. Yeah. So, you know, I, I don't have a whole lot of questions. I think that we've, we've kind of talked, you know, amongst ourselves here a lot. My, my plan here is that I do want to call for a task force when we get to council. I think that's my next step, work with you guys and, and other council members on kind of what we think that task force should look like and what we want to see outcomes, what we'd like to see from that task force. But, you know, I just again, want to reiterate how thankful I am that you guys are here, that, you know, you know, Haven, I don't know that you've got an opportunity to, to talk as much about how cool that is that, I hope, I don't mean this in a pejorative way, but you guys are kids and you are running this, this venue in Oakland that is solving such a big problem that we had with these, these small shows that were in, are too big of shows that were in people's living rooms. And it was, it was such a neighborhood issue for us and now you've come in and like, you know, and every one of you, I can kind of talk a story about like how cool you are and how thankful we are that you're here. So I, you know, I just, as much of like a, a big hug I can give you guys all, like I just, I want to thank you for, for being in our district and making our city so great and consider myself, you know, aligned with you and, and looking to fight for what we can do to, to make you guys stay here in the long haul. So, anything else from, from anyone here?
Just thank you for taking the time.
Yeah, thanks for having us.
Thank you, Bob.
I wanted to, to mention the venues that wanted to be here, couldn't be here. I know Brillo Box, Spirit.
Roboto.
Roboto, yes. And Con Alma downtown as well. So, you know, there's venues in every legislative district all across the city, whether they're at this table or not. I know, you know, we all had a meeting yesterday and we all shared kind of these same thoughts and, and once. So I appreciate you guys hearing us out.
Yeah. I will echo that and again, thank you all for your time and consideration for this really, I, I, again, to, one other point I wanted to bring up too is, you know, with a lot of these spaces, a lot of these are run by people within the community and a lot of them are run by artists as well. So I think that there's a very deep investment into this, this culture and this, the sector of the economy and the sector of the creative, creative economy that I think all, you know, envelops itself. So I think that, again, thank you guys, thank you all for your time and we're really appreciative of the space.
Thank you very much. So having exhausted the business of this post agenda, this meeting is adjourned.